Hey there and welcome back to another study session video. Um, this video we're gonna be doing this problem, the minimum difficulty of job schedule. So let's start reading it. So you guys wanna schedule a list of jobs and end or D days. Jobs are dependent. To work on one job, you have to finish all the jobs beforehand. Okay, so you have to do it in order. You have to finish at least one task every day. Difficulty of job schedules is sum of difficulties. Each day, difficulty of a day is a maximum difficulty. Given job difficulty injured D. Turn the minimum difficulty of a job schedule. Okay, so from what I gather out of this, we have to do jobs in order and then we do a bunch of jobs or at least one every day. And then the difficulty is the sum of the difficulties of each day. Some of the difficulties of each day. Seems kinda weird cuz then that would basically be like the total sum. The difficulty of the day. Oh, okay, never mind. So the difficulty of the day is a maximum difficulty of a job. Okay, so difficulty of a day is a maximum job every each day. And then the Total difficulty is like the sum of all those maxes. So you're given job difficulty and your D difficulty of the jobs I. So let's take a look. So what is D? Schedule list. Oh, D is the number of days we have. Okay. So here the max be six, so it'd be six and one. Okay, and you have to do them in order. Yes, it's like, so the first day you can either do six or six and five or so on. Three hundred. Okay, well. Think this is just straightforward DP. If I'm not, like, every day we just start where wherever we're at. And we just like, take up to the days and then if we run out of job, can we do nothing for a day? You cannot find the schedule. Do we, can we do nothing? At least one task. Great. So you have to do at least one. So if we run out of tasks tomorrow day, we just return like infinity or something. Uh, otherwise we just, yeah, DP. I mean, there might be some optimization, but yeah, I think just straightforward DP cuz the, the, like, this is where constraints is really good. You can just look at constraints and it's like, okay, well, there's only three hundred. So it's easily gonna pass for, uh, like three hundred squared. Okay, and we also need to know what day we're on, but there's not a lot of days, which is nice. So it's like three hundred squared times ten, which is nothing. Like that'll pass. Okay. And yeah, so. Okay, so. Now the question is for DP, do you wanna do like top down, bottom up? So in this case, for every single day, you have to. You might have to go like all the way across. Um, so you can't really do space optimized here. And maybe a little bit, but worst case, actually. Can you do space optimized? I mean, you could. Yeah, you could do space optimized cuz like, at every day you can only do. No, actually, you can't. Yeah, cuz you could do, you could do a bunch of jobs in days. Actually, you can't. Um, so we can do top down, bottom up. I've been practicing bottom up and I'm worse at it, so we'll just go with that. So first we'll just say like if the number of days is greater than, and let's have the length of this guy, so. Alright, so if we have more days than jobs, then we just return negative one right away and so we can handle that case. Um, okay, so we wanna think about our DP. So our DP, um, we need to know like what index we're on and what day we're on and what index we start at. Yeah. Yeah, I think so. And what's our base case? So our base case is and we can do a few things. Yeah, I think we wanna, so you wanna think about like, do you wanna go backwards or do you wanna go forwards? I think we can go backwards. So basically, we can just say like at the last, like whenever we're done, like our last day. Uh, and we're done with the jobs, then that is gonna be zero and everything else is like infinity or something. So, yeah, and if we, if it's infinity, then it's like invalid. Something like that. Feel like that's the way to go. So let's just do something like that. Essentially, first index would be the day and we can be on day zero or we could be on basically this is just D, like once we're on the net last day, then we're done. Uh, and then the number is gonna be like the index, so we can be on any index or out of bounds. So that's just a J plus one. Alright, so the base case will say if we're on the last day and we're out of bounds. Actually, let's fill everything else first. So we'll just say like four. T with max value. Okay, uh, max value. And the base case will be uh, if we're on the last day and we're out of bounds, so DP of D. And we're out of bounds and this will be zero. Everything else will just be, uh, yeah. Alright, so essentially when we're done and we are, yeah, it's definitely top down would be a lot easier, but I'm practicing this, so. Yeah, for all of DP, I'll just do bottom up and I'll just do bottom up space optimized and so on, and I'll try to skip the steps of doing top down. Okay, so what we need to do is we need to go through the days and then we need to go through all of the jobs. And then for every day, um, we have to let's see. I mean, I guess it's fine. We, we can do some optimizations, but for every day, yeah, we can't just go through all the jobs. It's fine. Okay, so let's write that out. So for, so the first loop is gonna be, and we can just comment this a little bit. Uh, so this is gonna be the day, actually. Do we want the day? Yeah, every day and then have all the indices day. Yeah, so this will be day, so and I equals. Uh, so we wanna go backwards, so. And so this will be the index of the tasks or the jobs. And we'll just make it zero. Technically, it can't be zero because like the first few days you have to have a job, so. We could change this a little bit. I guess we maybe should do that. I mean, it's gonna work out either way. I guess we'll say J equals, uh, so, so if you think about it, if we're on day like two or something, we need to have done two jobs already. So the first, the earliest place we could start is gonna be here, or not J I. Uh, and then we'll just go to the end. So J is less than J. Alright, so there we go. So basically like, uh, for on day, let's say we have like four days and we're on day three. Um, we have to be on job three because we had to do, uh, like jobs before then, at least one per day. Okay, so we wanna think about like how this works now. Um, so we wanna keep track of the like the costliest task. So we'll just do, uh, int like cur max or something. Zero. So essentially our cur max is just gonna be the maximum of the current one plus the rest, so cur max. Of, uh, job difficulty at index J. And the old one. So that's gonna be like our value. Okay, now we wanna think like where are we recursing? And we wanna make sure that we're cursing to the la- the valid one. So we'll say if DP, so essentially this is gonna be day plus one. So I have this one. Um, and, or we, we can even get that value, right? So we can say like recur like the rest of the schedule or something. Ah, we can write this way too. So essentially the next day and we need to start the next index, so this will be so this will be, um, J plus one. So essentially, we end at this job and this will be the next one. So if this doesn't equal, uh, integer max value, then this is valid cuz otherwise we're gonna enter overflow. If we do like an add, we're gonna enter overflow. I mean, the alternative we could have done was instead of making this integer max value, make it something smaller and then, but this is fine. Essentially, this means that like this, this can't happen. So if, if it can't happen, then we'll say DP. Um, IJ. And then we try to minimize. So, man. So this is like for the current day, if we end with this job, it'll be the current max plus DP of I plus one. J plus one. I think this is fine. So this is basically our curse case and then we wanna return um, DP starting at day zero and index zero and let's just see if that's correct and see if we screwed anything else up. Definitely top down is gonna be way easier, uh, but whatever. Out of bounds. Okay, so I. Just one. Oh, cuz we made this D. So. Yeah, so we actually needed to be like day zero, day one. Okay, so this needs to be this. Now. Okay, we got our wrong answer. Oh, yeah, like a I feel like this is overflow. I mean, it's gotta be, right? So let's, uh, let's see, how do we? Fill it with max value. Oh, right. So this is, this is, uh, can't happen, right? So case one, I'm guessing it can't happen. Or example two or something. Okay, this one actually should be seven. This one, we did get negative. How do we even get negative one? What? Oh, because our days is bigger. I see. Okay, so this one's correct, which is interesting. So how do we debug this? Um, we probably want to print, like for every index, we probably wanna print the index and the DP there and just to make sure that it's correct. Right? Yeah, so let's do that. So let's go. So this will be like the index. Um, that'll be I. And, yeah, I think debugging these things is also kind of important to know, like what do you want, actually wanna log and how do you fix it quick? And this will be the DP at that index, so we'll say. Um, DP at I. Okay, let's take a look. This example, so at index one. Uh, this is the only valid one. Index zero. Yeah, so at index one, basically it's telling you if you start a job. What is this? Uh, oh, actually. That's pretty tricky, actually. Uh. Okay, though, these are all integer max value. Yeah, so you wanna start a job. I feel like at index one, at any job you start, it should let you like obviously, you have to start at, did I do this wrong? Uh, J. J is equal to I. So at index one, you have to start at this job, but, um, no matter what, this should be fine. Oh, actually, no, it shouldn't be fine. You have to start at a job. Let's think about that. So you always started that job. Yeah, you always start here or do we wanna always start here? Maybe that's a problem as well. So we start at I. Um, yeah, I think this is actually probably incorrect. So we start at I, we get the current max and then we go to the next one. And the only one. Yeah, so, starting at all of these. Um. Like if we start at an index, what's the best we can do? So. If we start at an index. Which is gonna be here, but we don't necessarily wanna start here. Cuz we could start at first bigger ones. So what we wanna do, maybe this is trickier than I thought. So, given a start index, like where, like, where we start. We still have to go through the end of it. Oh, so I think I just oversimplified this. Maybe that's what it is. Yeah, because this is three hundred. I think I need one more. So this is like the start index, but I think I need one more DP. Um, which is going all the way to the end. I think that's actually what it is. Yeah, so this is like start index. And then we need another loop of like where do we end? So given a start, this is fine. But we need another one, so we can call this like E. So we wanna end at J and we wanna stop at uh, basically like one of these. This is like the last one we do. And then, and then, yeah, I think that's what I screwed up. We need three. Okay, so if DP. So I plus one is the next day, that part is correct. And I think E is the last one. So if this is not the case, then DPI. So this is basically, we started J, DPI J, current max. So we started some index and then we go all the way. Uh, yeah. Job difficulty J, current max, uh, and we need to declare it here. Let me to put it in here. So current max drop. Okay, so if the next one is valid, then DPI. E, or actually, so DPI J is where you start. So yeah, it is DPI J, current max plus DPI plus one. And so the next one is gonna be actually this. So that's, I think that's what we screwed up. We needed a third thing here. Okay, so that's correct. It's, it's definitely hard thinking of this like bottom up first for me. Like top down, this would be super fast, but I'm just practicing the other way. Okay, cool. So now that we did that. And so, yeah, notice here, like, I mean, we could have some more, uh, cuts here. Like, for example, we don't really need to go to the last job because that um, will never be valid, or not always, like, we need to, like, some, some optimizations we can make, I guess, thinking about it is we don't really need to go to the last. We need to go to like, like, we need to make sure there's at least one job for every day. So what we could say is like, okay, well, if we're on J. Uh, we need to figure out like how many jobs are there left and that's how many we can do. So for example, here if we're on index two and we're on like day one. Or I guess, let's say there were four days. Uh, if we're on index two and there's four days. And we're on day two, we need to make sure there's at least two, two jobs left for the last one, right? So we could do this a little bit better. So we could say like J minus. So how many days are there left? Well, the days there are left is going to be I guess, yeah, so if we're on day two and day is four, that means there's only gonna be actually three and that's it. So it's gonna be like D minus J, no, I minus ones. If there's four days, we're on index two, there's only one left, right? So. So we need to make sure that like it leaves whatever this is. So this is, so in that case, if there's like one day left here. Uh, yeah, I think this is fine. Let's double check. Maybe it's not. Okay, it is. So I think this is correct. Uh, so now the question is, can we get rid of this now was my goal. Basically, we're saying like we can never have an invalid now because we're double checking. Is that correct or am I wrong? Okay, we're getting, okay, I guess that wasn't correct. Um, why not? Feel like it always should be. Let's see. So essentially like, yeah, so we need to be whatever, we'll just leave it. This is fine. There's like some exact thing you can do, but this doesn't cost you anything, so whatever, this is fine. Okay, so now from here, what I would do is I would say, okay, first let's look at the editorial and make sure like we have their optimal top down DP. Uh, N squared D, N squared D, that's what we had. N squared D and D, uh, that's what we had. Bottom of one D DP, N squared DN. Yeah, so this is what I was saying, like for the day, you don't need, but this isn't honestly this. I would argue like I wouldn't even optimize here. It's gonna be a little bit tricky and it's ND and D is only ten, so it's whatever. Monotonic stack. I didn't think of that one. So what's this gonna be? Um, ND. So that is significantly better. Um. Do I want to spend time looking into this? And I'll quickly read some of it, I guess. Is there a better solution? The answer is yes. Typical interview, uh, think about where I'm just methodology. Value. Yeah, I'm gonna say in this case, like I would just would never go for a monotonic stack here. Oh, classic, the, the dude who has the crazy, uh, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I think, I'm just like, I, I honestly would not ever do a monotonic stack here. So I think I'm pretty happy with this, so I would not, uh, go with that, but we'll do um, yeah, DP solution using a monotonic stack. Uh, I think once, once we get to those, like once it's required, then we'll, then we'll get into that. I think for now it's not. The last thing I will do is I will throw this into this and say uh, she's a better model. Hopefully it actually works. Um, refactor. Anything if needed. Needed, but keep the DP solution. Okay, let's see if we actually get something. And then, by the way, so for time and space, yeah, it's kind of obvious, like, so time. Since we have N squared D, which is, yeah, because we have the two loops, um, and space. Uh, ND. And what I would recommend, like if you're new to DP, I would just never do this. I would just do top down way easier, um, but for bottom up. Yeah, like, we're gonna see if there's any way to make this, cuz you see how it took me a little bit of time to think, like it's a little bit less intuitive for me to do, uh, bottom of DP like straight off the bat. And so, but I am practicing it and I feel like it's decent practice. I can just do like bottom of DP or space optimize or whatever. It just takes a little bit longer. If you're new to DP, I'll just do top down. I think top down I could have done like five minutes, um. But there are reasons, so you can clean up tighter bounds, safer overflow handling using inf. So I'm guessing inf, they just hardcoded a value that doesn't make it overflow and that, then you don't have to check, but let's take a look. So. Okay. Yeah, so that's what, that's what I was saying. Instead of using, um, like integer max value, you just use a value big enough to where, uh, you don't get overflow and then you can just check in the result for that. Actually, sorry, you're, you never have to check for negative one. The only way you need negative, like basically this is the only way it'll be negative one. Because everything else is all, there's always a solution. So I guess, like, in, in yeah, I mean, you could have, you could have done this with top down as well. Uh, but in top down, you'll have a base case and then which case you'll have, um, like you'll have infinity. But yeah, so this is fine. I mean, it's kinda like a magic number, but whatever. Uh, so this same, same, same. I think this is the same. Last end. Yeah, so this is and they still check for this. So they actually checked, which is interesting. Like they should just work off the bat, I feel like. Because if you avoid overflow, like I think this will work. Let's see. Yeah, may, maybe it's too big still. Yeah, okay, so, so this is what I was thinking, like you can just, uh, if you wanted to, you could do this, or you can make it like longs or something, but the small stuff, I don't really think it matters. Um. I am curious, so what I wanna do is, can we refactor? But not go from the end. Instead go from start. I'm curious. So for, for these, like, uh, the, the, the two D, three DDP or whatever. Uh, I always try to figure out like, do I wanna go from the start or go from the end, things like that, um. And I generally try to go from the start if possible. Maybe I missed something, so we'll see. Yeah, okay, so there is a way to do it. I just wanna see what the pattern is cuz I feel like from the start is more intuitive in general, so if you can do that, so let's see what the pattern was. See if this works first. It does. Okay, so let's take a look. Uh, previous current. Okay. So essentially, yeah, this is the space optimized, which is, yeah, like I said, for every day, you can do that. So previous and and current fill previous and previous zero. Okay. So I think what they do then is they basically say like before you start doing no jobs costs zero and then they're gonna go through all of these days and then see like what's the cost of doing every job when you're at the end, which makes sense. So let's take a look at how this works. So day equals one, digs D. Okay, and then, yeah, basically here, uh, th- this is the same as mine. So essentially you have like so you'd basically say like, okay, on day zero, you'd have nothing and then at the end of day two, what would you have? So that, this is like the same. So we fill the current with infinite. By the end of the day, we must have done at least day jobs. That makes sense. Uh, and then here, let's take a look. So for in day max done. Max difficulty of the segment. Okay, split the last number of jobs. Uh, split, okay, so. If previous is infinite. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna have to look into this more detail, but at least you can do this from the front. I feel like maybe in this case it was more intuitive from, from the end, so I guess it's just like personal preference. Yeah, you can generate for these, have a base case at the front or at the end, and usually the basic is the front looks like if you haven't done anything, you know, the answer is like zero or one time or whatever. Uh, but, pretty similar to what I did. So the only real optimization I would probably have is make this, I guess we could do that. Yes, I'll probably do that actually. So how do I make this um, space optimized, right? That, that is worth learning, uh. So basically, the way we do this is um. For every day, we can have a DP array, right? So, so let's do that. So let's just say TP. And it's not honestly that hard to space optimize, so. Equals, um, maybe inter ray. And so essentially we have every single state here. Um, and this is just gonna be like job difficulty length plus one. Uh, and then we can say, we can get rid of that, we can fill DP. With that, and then we're gonna set, um. So now our D, this is the last day, so this is at like two. So DP at index J is zero, okay? So now basically at every single day before then, you're gonna make a new DP, so. Need to ray of length J. Okay. Um, yeah, so. And then uh, that I reuse, okay, uh, cur max, alright, so. Okay, so now we just change these out. So we just say, so this is looking at the next day, so that's just DP. So if this is valid. Then this is the new DP, so new DP. Uh, J was it? And this is gonna be new DP J. Or, yeah, or actually, yeah, you started J plus. And so this is using the old DP, so DP of E plus one. And then basically what we do is at the end of this traversal, we just say DP, and so we just replace it. And now we just re- return that. Let's see if we have any errors. So it's actually, once you do like the normal one, space optimizing is pretty fast. Let's see if we have any errors. Uh, it looks like we do output zero. I guess it's just outputting zero. Okay, so let's see what the problem is. Okay, so for the last day, uh, we're gonna make this and we're gonna say that the the, uh, difficulty of doing nothing is, or when we're done, so that's fine. Okay, so we go. We make a new DP. Um, and then, oh, I think we need to do one more thing here. We need to actually, so if you make new DP and you min, then it's gonna be, uh, it's going to be, uh, zeros. So we need to fill this thing with max values. See if that solves it. Uh, do DP and then, yeah, it'll be fine. Oh, whoops, new DP. I think that's the problem is, um, the zero. But we'll see. Okay, there we go. So, so I would, I would argue this is good. I wouldn't go with the monotonic stack for like, so I'd say if this is an interview question for like the study stuff, I would just go with top down. Uh, pretty straightforward. You just have a start index and a start day and you just loop. Um, if for, for, for practice bottom up, just do this. Um, if for, for, for practice, bottom up, just do this. And space optimize, you can see, like, normally, I just do space optimize off the back, cuz it's not that bad. Um, yeah, I think for this one, going backwards is more intuitive to me, because like, makes sense that at the end, there's nothing to do. Uh, but you can also do forward, so I usually just base it off of like what makes more sense. Um, yeah, hopefully this wasn't too ranty, let me know what you guys think of this format and so on. And yeah, gonna be all for this one, so thanks for watching, see you in the next one.